At this time, we'd like to call our meeting to order. Due to COVID-19 pandemic, the public is encouraged to wear face masks and social distancing measures have been put in place. Seating is limited. Reminder before the meeting begins, we ask that you silence your cell phones. At this time, we're going to ask Councilmember Robinson to lead us in our invocation, and Councilmember Cook to lead us in our pledge to the meeting.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come tonight to first give you praise and honor. Father God, we ask you to clear our hearts and our minds to do what you need for us to do to better our communities and city. Lord, guide us to be about your agenda and not of our own agenda. We ask you to continue to keep us all safe and well as we work together for the good of our city. In all of these things, we ask of you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Do you want me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam clerk, would you please poll the council members?
Councilmember Cook?
Present.
May I approach and make a poll of the senators?
Present.
Councilmember Sommer from the Bronx?
Present.
Councilmember Yvonne Rodden?
Present.
Councilmember William Scott?
Present.
Councilmember Liam Passon?
Mayor Anderson, I find it to be a poor one.
Thank you. At this time, we'd ask for a motion to adoption of the agenda as printed.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda as printed?
Sir. Properly moved in second. All those in favor by show of hands. Next, we have the approval of our minutes from Tuesday, April 12th, 2022, special call meeting and regular city council meeting.
Move to approve the minutes from April 12th for special call meeting?
Second.
Properly moved in second. Questions?
And the regular council.
Yes, and regular city council.
Oh, and the regular council meeting tonight.
Second again.
Okay, properly moved in second. All those in favor by show of hands. Next item is. Yeah, I'm looking for PDRTA. There he is. Oh, you've been gone so long, you look different, man. You gotta come to Lake City more.
How you doing, sir?
Doing good.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, staff, and general public here tonight for allowing me to come. I'm Don Strickland, Executive Director of PDRTA, and, uh, Mayor just said I got over an elderly. But anyways, thank you all for allowing me to come. Just want to give a brief update. I don't want to take a lot of your time. Lake City, many years ago, we started a lake tram route over here that runs throughout the city during the day, Monday through Friday, like nine or 10 hours a day now. The service has continued to do well. We're averaging, it depends on which month we're looking at, even throughout the pandemic, lake tram was one of the routes that kind of held its song throughout, throughout that whole period. I am fortunate to say that we did not have to end that service during the pandemic. It was there. Obviously, with the mass situation throughout the entire period, we did, we had a lot of different protocols in place. I don't want to talk about the pandemic, so I'm going to move on past that. But the service is doing well. We average anywhere from 1,200 to 1,500. We've had upwards of 1,700 trips on that particular route, which is within the city. And we have some future plans as far as expansion and making some changes, modifications to reach areas that really need the service that we haven't been reaching. And so that's a part of the plan. We've had a lot of, a lot of folks reaching out to us about what are we going to do with MUSC in the hospital when it opens? Just down the street from you, as you know, the lake tram bus can't get there. So that's, that's part of the conversation. We've had meetings with MUSC as far as what that may look like. And obviously, we're going to need connections for seniors and everybody else to get our way down to the hospital. But that's part of our future plans, future plans as well. We've, the Myrtle Beach bus still runs 363 days a year. So the only day we're not running is Thanksgiving and Christmas Day, and it runs every other day. We're taking folks from Lake City to work every day, and they're coming back, that's seven days a week. And that service, this is the peak season, so usually in May it starts picking back up. At this time of year, we average anywhere from about 15 or 20 of those going down every day to go to work. As the months continue to roll on, we'll have 30, 35. We've had upwards of 40 on a 44-passenger bus going down there. So just, we anticipate, it actually is doing better than our Marion County bus right now as far as the ridership. So it has gotten better in that regard, and I anticipate that continuing to happen. So the service is doing well. We're getting ready to push out a lot, a lot of new things. I know with discounts, I don't know if I've shared some of the stuff we've done, but we have, we have an app. Now, it's a PDRTA sync app. Every passenger that uses our system, anybody, and most folks now have a smartphone, you're able to download that app and see the lake tram bus, see the Myrtle Beach bus as it's in motion. When that bus makes a right-hand turn, you can actually see a live feed. So for a long time, you know, during, during the hotter months, excuse me, our passengers, you know, may have been waiting outside for 10 or 15 minutes without a bus to come because they didn't want to miss it. Now they see the bus. They see it on that live. They know when they can get off the chair, get off the couch, go outside, have to wait in the 100-degree weather to be able to catch the bus. So that's another, another good feature. But I just wanted to come share that, you know, we have a lot of good plans. There's some changes now that we're kind of where we are. We want to see continued growth. We're looking to do more things with marketing. Many times in the past, we've partnered with like the senior center. We would actually go do tours with them, show the seniors that weren't already using the bus what's available, show them how to get to the grocery store. We still take folks to dialysis, places like that. And we're doing, we've had partners with adult education, just different, different entities throughout the area. And just wanted to thank Council, Mayor for the support, the local support. Excuse me, for those that don't know, 75% of what we do is covered on the federal level, but we have to have local commitments in order to draw that 75% down in federal funds. So not, you know, we, that's the one good thing about what we do as a, as a public provider of transportation is for every quarter we get, we can match it with three additional quarters. And that's really what makes a big, biggest difference, allowing us to be able to do what we do on the local level. But happy to entertain any questions. I said I don't want to keep you long, but just wanted to let you know that we're still here, the services are doing well, and we do have plans for expansion and modification of the routes as we move forward to be able to better accommodate the citizens of Lake City.
Questions, any? If not, thank you, and we certainly appreciate the service that you all provide. And a long haul, but we started out with it, but it's, it's running strong.
Yes, sir. We're going to try to continue that path. And, you know, one, one thing that we have done at, at PDRTA in the past three years, we've actually brought on additional local partners. So, you know, the PDRTA ask has been the same for many years, and the reason that hasn't increased with fuel costs and everything else is because we have been able to bring in some other partners. And my goal is to continue to be able to do that so that, that the cost doesn't, you know, with the city doesn't increase for able to maintain that. And who knows, at some point, hopefully we'll not be able to decrease it. We get enough partners at the table. But this year, if we could do the same as we have previous, now it's been almost a decade, that would be ideal to be able to maintain the level of service that we're looking at, plus we're going to be able to add some additional resources out there. Certainly appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have our public comment period. Comments are limited to two minutes per person. No personal or verbal attacks will be entertained. The council is interested in hearing your concerns, but speakers should not expect council action or deliberation on subject matters brought up during the public comment period. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the city administration and may be scheduled for a future agenda. Please make sure to sign in and leave your name and address for the record with city clerk to counsel.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Emma Hart. I live at 355 Moore Street here in Lake City. It is said, one can go fast, but a group can go far. We come as, as that group, the community, to address the serious concerns of the citizens of this city, standing as a community, knowing the people, the problems of gun violence, the deterioration of certain parts of the city, and knowing that the solutions to the issue is not a, is not a sprint, but a marathon. So we ask you, children, if it grant used, council members, two minutes, we have so few of the opportunity to ask.
Mr. Mayor, we committed to the justice and justice.
Where they live in that building out there, them, the pretty houses out there by the lake. Every child is important, no matter where it comes from. You got to start playing games. This is serious. If I had this meeting three years ago, and we still busting a house on Lincoln Street with all them drugs and everything else, then where are we at? Y'all know me, didn't know my address. That's how much I come up here and I talk about it. We've got to concern ourselves with these children, and they're not to be played with. I promise you they're not to be played with. This is serious. People got to understand that. Mother, grandmother, a great-grandmother, and a great-great-husband, two of them. Y'all got to hear me. I'm going to do an Ed Robinson. I don't want to march around this city hall for somebody to hear me. Because he told me that. Man, if they don't listen to you, march, you have to march by yourself. Somebody got to hear me. These kids are important. They're not to be played with. We need people that's going to care about these kids. And I've been out here in this field a long time. Do y'all hear me? And I'm like, asking, I want to hear from y'all. You owe it to us. Because that vote, we pleased to you say you respond to us. You hear the say of us, okay? We, I want to hear from you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Margaret Jones. I wrote my address down here. I'm not a library on, um, gun houses, because Mary and Ms. Martin already done that. And also, this is what I want to answer from the city council. Uh, we can stop some of these things that are going in our community. Our community got $3.2 million. Uh, we as a community, we know y'all still thinking about what y'all want to do with this money. We as a community want you to know, from a community phone, let us know what you plan on doing with this money in our community, to help our community. Just don't meet together and just maybe say, let us know. I want to know. I want to be informed. I want to be informed what we can do with this money that we got to better our community. I would really like to know. Call us, put it on Facebook. Let's know when these meetings are going so we know what's going on. Because every time we even don't know what's going on. What are we going to do to better our community? We got to do something to better our community. It's like Ms. May said, we put y'all in these seats to serve us. We deserve answer. What we can do to make changes? What we can do to better this community? Also, I saw on 40, um, 2022, 05, second and final reading, um, to purchase the property on 420 James Street. Uh, when you come to that, just elaborate on that, let us know what plan we're going to get property. Also, on 106 Lake Street, I think it's a building there. Also, when you get to that, elaborate what we'd be doing with these property when we purchase these on for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, public comment?
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. We have the ordinance number 2022.005, second and final reading. An ordinance for the city of Lake City, South Carolina, authorizing the purchase of property located at 420 James Street, tax ID number 800041401, and all matters related thereto. And as requested, this property will be used to build two affordable houses for the community.
Okay, the floor is now open for a motion to pass ordinance 2022.005, for second and final reading.
Move to approve ordinance 2022.005 for this final reading.
Properly moved in second. Questions?
Can you, can you repeat that one more time? Your elaboration, yes.
The purpose of purchasing 420 James Street is to alleviate a convenient dump and put two affordable houses on that property that we can sell to, that to people who wish to live in the community.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor by show of hands?
Council, ordinance number 2022.006, second and final reading. An ordinance for the city of Lake City, South Carolina, authorizing the purchase of property located at 106 Lake Street, tax ID number 8001505024, and all matters related thereto. And as requested, this property will be purchased so we can start enforcing our semi-truck parking in the communities and giving our people that have these trucks a place to park them when we start enforcing the rules and our ordinance.
Okay. Floor is now open for a motion to approve ordinance 2022.006, for second and final reading.
Make a motion to approve ordinance number 2022.006. Second.
Properly moved in second. Questions?
For this, for this area, for, for them?
Hold, hold on, somebody speaking. I'll get you on that.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead, Mrs. Robinson.
For, for this property, I think we said, spoke last time about how much it would be, um, whether we are charged for them.
We're, we're looking at about $25 a month because we were actually wanting to get the trucks out of the community. Uh, we don't want to make it to where there, it's not worth of them moving it. Uh, so we're looking at about $25 a month. We're not trying to take advantage of a situation.
And this is supposed to help some people, it's been disturbing some others with this?
Especially the, the, um, the freezer trucks that run at night. And then you have those that are parked, and it's on the state side, and you block their driveways, or the elderly are trying to sit on their porch and enjoying, and all they see is trucks. So it, it's trying to help all involved.
Is there certain streets in Lake City that you should not have those big trucks on?
Well, Chief Cooper, we have an ordinance in place that does not allow them to park in the communities. And we really, if we enforce it, then we have no place to say you can park them here. So.
Can I, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, uh, has any consideration, any more consideration been given to, uh, drivers, meaning to park their personal vehicles? Because you know, you do have some drivers who leave like three, four, five of them, and some they live alone. So I think that's going to pose an inconvenience for them if they're not allowed to park their vehicle. And I don't understand why they're not allowed. Was there a reason why?
Yes, first of all, you have gasoline that's in those trucks. Some of them have tanks that are, that are in those yards. The other is it causes so many blind spots as you ride through town in the morning when the kids are going to school. If you just stop and take a, a close look at it, you will see why we're so adamant about trying to get those trucks away from those intersections.
May I really hear you?
Well, I'll make sure you get it in a minute.
So this, this is an option for them? This is not mandatory? Am I right?
We're not making it mandatory, I mean, but we're now going to try to enforce the ordinance. And if we're going to enforce the ordinance, we want to be able to say, here's an option.
Here's an option.
But if we enforce an ordinance and we have no option, where can we tell them to park at?
I cannot understand what the mayor is saying is the reason why I have to park their personal vehicles.
Chief answer that for her.
About personal vehicles?
Yeah.
Yeah, what do you mean? Um, right now, based on this, this conversation and the ordinance, maybe it's just me, I was under the impression that this is the second and final reading, so we can go ahead and approve it so we can move forward and consider the car parking at a later date. It might be something, is that correct? I didn't know we were making that decision now because I think the last time we had this conversation is more so we're going to approve it, then we're going to go back and look at some type of amendment to try to fix it to see if we can actually do the car. But I think this is mostly just to ensure we get the proper.
Who's talking?
Chief Cooper.
Who's talking now?
Chief Cooper, ma'am.
Okay, I still don't see that there's a valid reason why they can't park their cars there, because you know you're not going to cut that labor in a manner.
I can't, I can't make that decision, ma'am. I'm just saying, I, I can't give any, I can't make an informed decision on cars at this time. I really can't give you any, anything that's factual based on how you guys want to proceed with the cars because I, that's, that's not my level of, uh, this political process. What I'm saying is, I was under the impression that, I, I was saying, I was under the impression that this ordinance was going to be the second and final, just so we can approve it and move forward, and then we're going to consider the cars at a later date.
That, that is correct. Statement, Councilmember Crosby. This is to give us the permission to purchase the property so we then now can develop a policy and procedure and put in place to operate the property. But we have to purchase it to move forward so we can put a procedure in place.
Okay, what's going to determine, I mean, how late this is going to be? I don't understand the rationale behind it.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry that you don't understand the rationale behind it, but we're not going to stay on that one subject all evening. We all know that we do have parking issues in regards to the large trucks, the gas that's associated with going in the neigh, in the community. All somebody has to do is come through there and flick a cigarette or something, or throw firecrackers or something like that, and you've got a huge explosion. So we, if we err, we're going to err on, on safety. And that's, that's what we're looking for in the community. It's going to take us keeping each other safe. And I grant you, uh, when you all called about the And I grant you, uh, when you all called about the, the trucks and the roads, uh, how torn they are, it hadn't been that long ago that they paved Moore Street all the way down to the, uh, almost out to Dr. Graham, just about. And look at that road today. It's already eaten up and already torn up from the log trucks and the other trucks that come through Moore Street. And so if we're gonna make sure that we're looking out for properties and things that we need to keep, um, up in place, then it's gonna take everybody to participate in. And for a truck driver just to totally disregard, you got many of them out there that whatever you need, yes, sir, we'll move it. We'll move it. We'll take care of that. Then you have others that they just don't wanna, they, they don't wanna obey the law. But you expect everybody to obey the law and you get a free pass. It can't work that way if we're trying to clean our community up and keep it looking like it should look.
Let me just make sure that we, we will go back and look at parking cars too.
Oh, well, you can't use a pole to truck out and steal parts. Do you have that property?
Once we get the approval to purchase the property, then we will sit down and put a policy together that will come back to Mayor and Council for your approval. But we didn't see a need to try to put a policy together until we got the approval to purchase the property.
Okay, let me ask the next question. Uh, since we're doing this, should it not be the time that we look at some kind of bypass? Keep them off these streets up in here?
But this is, we having more problems with neighborhood parking right now than we have trucks coming through.
If you look at your roads, uh, main streets and some of that's kind of places up there and they, they have no business having eighteen wheelers on main street. Unless they unload. I understand that part. You know what I mean? It's, it's a lot of it comes down to that. I don't know how, how we handle that or where we go to get it started. I think we need to have something that gets them on fifty-two, brings them around, back into three forty-one, whatever they need to do, but.
And, and I know, Richard, that, that's been discussed for years. And I feel the same way you do in regards to that. We do need a, a, a roundabout or bypass. And it's been brought up years ago and, uh, and we're still doing it today. But the powers that be on that, we need to speak with our local representatives, um, with, um.
I just said we need to start some.
Yeah.
But this right here just needs to get passed so we can.
So then we can do the next step, start the process of, of getting the title search done, uh, getting with the lawyers to do the, draw up the paperwork and then we're gonna sit down and draw up the policies and procedures though, or we can enforce the improper, what we're gonna do on the property. We'll bring it back to you hopefully within next month and say, this is what we propose.
What, what are the people that live in this neighborhood? Thank you.
The one right, for the property right across the street?
Yeah, Lake Street.
But we've not heard anything and it's been advertised and we've had it out on council. Uh, we're actually, the city's gonna take the responsibility to finish clearing the property, taking the risers down and capping those, those, uh, water, water top caps off that were there for the fire suppression. Uh, we're gonna clean it up and make it presentable. Um, and hopefully with it being that there's no houses right there at it, right? Because it's that street that runs by the, the, um, railroad track. It shouldn't be an interference to anybody over there. But we're gonna make it look as presentable as possible. We've even talked about putting some shrubs around the edge to kind of do some hiding.
About how many parking stations are in that?
I think we counted off about twenty-five or thirty. But that's just a, a guess. That's a walking, uh, guess. We haven't taken the, the tape measure out there and marked them off and repositioned the, the yellow stripes.
If you don't have a, if you don't have a, something for them to park in.
We're gonna put arrows. We've already talked about that, putting the yellow stripes out there and putting the arrows for the flow of traffic.
Okay. You don't possibly have any truckers in town?
No, ma'am.
So how are we going to decide the number of spaces?
I think that could be decided later after we.
If you don't know how many truckers.
I thought that was the whole point.
I mean, these are both local truck parks.
Yeah, we're concerned with the city limits of Lake City. We're concerned with trying to get the trucks on the various community streets that's parked on the side of houses, that's parked, uh, on, on, um, in the street areas in front of people's homes off of that and put them in a central place and give them an option to park their, their ways that they make a living. Give them an option or place to park those trucks as opposed to leaving them on their houses, property.
And now we just need to move forward.
All right. Any other questions? If none, let's move forward.
Vote. A vote for one oh six Lake Street.
Okay, floor is, um, now, we need, I need a motion to approve, uh.
We already did.
You just need to vote, all in favor?
All in favor. Councilmember Cook, um, let's do all those in favor by show of hands. All opposed? Next item.
All right. Uh, Mayor and Council, for the first reading, ordinance number twenty twenty-two point oh oh seven, an ordinance for the city of Lake City, South Carolina, to approve levying taxes and establishing a municipal budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three and all matters related thereto.
Okay, the floor is now open for a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two point zero zero seven for first reading.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Questions or discussion? If none, all those in favor by show of hand? All, all opposed? All right, next item.
Mayor and Council, uh, for your consideration and approval, first reading, resolution number twenty twenty-two point zero two eight, a resolution establishing approval for the acceptance of grant funds from the twenty twenty-two South Carolina Volunteer Strategic Assistance and Fire Equipment, V-Safe Grant and all matters related thereto.
Okay, the floor is now open for a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two point, point zero two eight for final reading.
Move to approve resolution twenty twenty-two point zero twenty-eight.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Questions?
William, can you just explain to, to the, um, to assistance what?
This is a fire grant that the fire department chief riggers and his staff applied for to assist in buying the new radios, fire department for twenty-nine. And it's a total of thirty thousand dollars to go toward the purchase of those radios. The city's responsibility will be one thousand sixty-five dollars and sixty-five cent.
And that's just for the fire department?
Five radios that will be for the fire department at this point, but we do have in the budget to purchase ten radios. And we also, uh, have a notice from Florence County about their schedule to convert to this new system, which is gonna be completed in twenty twenty-five.
That's part of the V-Safe grant which was approved by state South Carolina Fire Department. Seventy fire departments, I think, received those funds to get them purchased.
These radios, will they be adapted to the new system?
Those radios will not need to be upgraded or anything. They're rest up there. Thirty-one hundred cent a line, make them online. Those are the eight X five, six thousand radios, those are what's required now by, on campus and emergency dispatch.
Okay, any other questions? All right. All those in favor? We'll do a show of hands this time. Any opposed?
Uh, Mayor and Council, for your consideration, resolution number twenty twenty-two point oh two nine for final reading, a resolution establishing approval for the acceptance of a summer internship for the wastewater treatment plant and extending financial assi- assistance for implementation and all matters related thereto.
Can I explain that a little bit?
All right, what we, we, as we've heard, we, we need to entice our youth. Uh, this is the program that we're gonna offer, uh, to the high school that, uh, we're gonna pay them ten dollars an hour for their summer so they can understand what a wastewater treatment plant does for a city and also give them the opportunity to witness the ins and outs of the lab. So they're gonna see the pros and cons, the ins and outs, uh, and, and kind of get their hands dirty and get involved. So I think, um, I've mentioned this to several people. They thought it was a wonderful idea. It gives, uh, to people the opportunity to, uh, explore.
And it says here, the program will employ two students during an eight-week paid summer internship program.
Correct. Ten dollars an hour is what we're, we, we budgeted in for this.
How we determine which student would get this?
It would be done through the school system.
Through the school, okay.
There would be the best ones and hopefully it would be someone that's interested in, in science and chemistry because this has a lot to do with science and chemistry. A lot of people don't realize that when they hear wastewater treatment plant. But there's a lot that the licenses they have to have and, and the, the testing they do in the lab and so forth. There's just a lot more than that flowing to a wastewater treatment plant being treated and sent back out.
It also helps your train of staff.
I'm sorry?
How many hours a day?
For eight weeks, they would work the eight hours a day. What we're gonna try to do is keep them below thirty hours to be truthful with you. So they'll be eight hours a day until they hit thirty because we don't want to go over the threshold of having to offer benefits.
And what are the ages?
High school. Sixteen through eighteen. Okay.
And how many students you think?
Two.
Oh, just two?
Just two. Per cycle. Okay, at this time, the floor is now open for a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two point zero two nine for final reading.
Move to approve resolution twenty twenty-two point zero two nine for final reading.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any more questions? None, all those in favor by eyes? Okay, next item.
Mayor and Council, for your consideration, resolution number twenty twenty-two point zero three zero, fi- final reading, a resolution establishing approval for the acceptance of funding from the Department of Parts, Recreation and Tourism Development Funds for other and all matters related thereto. This is a grant that was awarded to the city of Lake City in the amount of nineteen thousand two hundred forty-two dollars and sixty-nine cents, which will be added on to the amount that we approved in capital expenditures for playground equipment and picnic shelters.
Okay. The floor is now open for a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two point zero three zero for final reading.
Move to approve resolution twenty twenty-two point zero three zero, final reading.
Second.
Been properly moved in second. Questions or discussion? If none, all those in favor by eyes? Next item.
Mayor and Council, I wish to request that we table resolution twenty twenty-two point oh three one until after our executive session. All right. Then, Mayor and Council, I will go into the, uh, city administrator's report. Uh, Mayor and Council, before we get started with the city administrator's report, uh, I want to share with you, everybody would have gotten one of these. It shows the progress at the hospital, that we now have an elevated towel, uh, water tank standing on its legs. I wanted to share with you that they've made this much progress and the sewer lines are being run down fifty-two. Um, also, I wanted to share with you, um, the pack that you've got here. It shows the various communications from the public information office, news articles, advertisements, um, um, TV reports that's involving the city of Lake City. And I, I might say that we're getting a lot more news in the paper than we ever have and, and this is a direct input from our public information office. So I've shared this whole pack with each of you for your review. Also, to let you know that the city of Lake City is now hauling their own sludge from the wastewater treatment plant. And just to give you a rough idea, uh, back in, starting in February twenty twenty, up until the point that we stopped allowing Republic to haul it, we have spent six hundred thirty-one thousand two hundred fifty-three dollars in that service to Republic. And now we're hauling, uh, our own sludge. And the part, the previous, the little bill we got from them, uh, for a partial month of April was three thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars because we hauled our own sludge. So in the roundabout way, when we finish paying for the, paying ourselves back for the truck, it's gonna start paying us in dividends by keeping this money in our bank account. Uh, we still have until January for them to do once a week pickup for our bar screen. Once the January rolls around, we'll be able to drop that and then we'll be that much more we're saving with Republic by not having to pay them at all. So we are now in the business of hauling our own sludge. Um, I wanted to let you know, I know you, that you had, uh, approved for us four hundred thousand dollars from the American Rescue Plan, um, from our stipend from the federal government to invest in the housing. Uh, we have some blueprint for housing from two different people. We've got construction costs on one blueprint, which is a little bit higher than what we want to do. Uh, I'm talking with a gentleman out of Columbia who works for the state housing, who actually built the little house in, um, Scranton, right past the car lot. And he's trying to get our costs down at ninety thousand dollars to where we can actually say it's an affordable house. Um, I've talked with a mortgage company. They're willing to work with someone to buy the house, just like they're doing with our police officers, at a five eighty credit score as opposed to a six twenty. So things are starting to fall in place and hopefully within the next thirty days, we'll have a, a good pricing that we can agree on and I can bring back to you for your approval. But with the way that things are in the market right now, it's such a volatile, um, market for building that, um, he's trying to make sure he gives us the best estimate that he can and can stick to it. So we are.
Building supplies are so expensive right now.
Yeah. But this gentleman with the state, is, state housing is, is, gets deals that normal contractors aren't being able to get. So I'm hoping he can work something out and I can come back with some good news that we can now say we can start building houses such as on the property that the city has. Um, we are working on the blithe housing. We have one that's approved. Uh, we, we've got some people in the community that we're going to educate and start helping to get the message out to the ones that are resistant to work with us. And we're looking at maybe we need to reword the letter a little bit to make it a little bit more enticing. Uh, so even though we've got one, we are still moving forward with the other processes. We need to have in place to move forward with the, the blithe housing. Uh, so hopefully within the next thirty, sixty days, we can have a, a better report on that.
What is the blithe housing?
Is the dilapidated homes to demolish.
Oh, okay.
So, so just to be clear, what, where are we exactly with that?
One, one, one family is agreed.
Okay, and by that agreement, prior to that agreement, you sent out a letter or?
They sent out letters. Yes, there is a letter that went out.
So all, all the letters have been, I mean, letters have been sent out to all properties so far?
Either, if I'm not mistaken, either we can't find the actual air or the people that own the house don't want it bothered. Is that a true statement?
How much legally can we do?
We're gonna try to do it.
I know. I understand that part. What can we do legally?
Well, it's a process that's laid out by the state of how you have to, the steps that you have to take. If someone just says, "No, we don't want you to move forward with it," uh, then we look to our. uh, then we look to our local ordinances, and code enforcement goes out. They've already gone out and looked at all of these houses. But there's a process here at the city level that's gone through, of them being on notice, of there being some deficiencies, and there's a hearing, and so on and so forth.
We also have to meet our federal laws, because it's the federal funds that we're dealing with.
Have we started that process?
We're still in the process of trying to get them to communicate with us.
How long? A question, how long do you do that?
Of the forty-ish that were sent, one is consented. So just imagine that there's forty people that we have to do title searches on to determine the owners. Um, that takes, that can take a protracted period of time. Um, and so that's what William and others have sort of taken a step back and said, "How can we sort of better explain what's happening to some of the, the residents, um, so that they understand better, and therefore hopefully get some more approach to consent, uh, to expedite the process exponentially." Um, so it's hard to give a hard timeline. Um, but once the, the hearing process and all of that starts, when you actually know the owner, I mean, we're still at the process, we're at the very infancy, I mean, we don't even have title abstracters yet. That's still being bid out, I mean, they're still in the bidding process of bidding out some of that work. So, I mean, it's still a very, 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 very infancy stage, um, of it. But once the title abstracters are hired, and that's gotta be signed off on by the state, um, then they do title work, and that's gonna take weeks, a month. Um, to those who were able to locate the appropriate owner, if they don't consent, then that process of actually having hearings and such is about a hundred and twenty-day total, total process. One, I mean, the more the consent, the quicker it goes.
Yeah.
There, there's no doubt about that, but-
Is it being explained to them, um, or is there something in place that if you don't want to, you don't consent to, you have to do something as far as like upkeeping this area, because it, it could be, you know, endangering to the neighbors around them? Um, or it could be an abandoned home where you have people coming in, um, you know, drug activity? Um, also with rodents and, and such. Is there something in place to enforce them, tell them, "Look, you don't want us to tear this down, but we need for you to do something about your property, because it's an eyesore, it's an endanger to the neighbors"?
And, and that's what our code enforcement office, uh, handles. And then when it starts dealing in, like Lincoln Avenue, we're in the process of making every effort now to remove that property, because it was a drug, drug property. And now by law, we can just go in, and, and the owners have consented for us to clean it off. So when it deals with drugs, it's, it's a commit, if, when they find out it is a drug place, it's, makes it easier for us to go in and remove the property. Is that not a true statement?
That would be correct, but it is a process, we have to go through, have to go through probate court, we have to show cause that we are removing this property, uh, from this location because of the activities that's been going on. So it, it is a process.
Yeah, ju- just, just so the pictures kind of, um, I can't speak to the specific letters that, that went out. Um, but just, number one, the program itself is a state slash federal program, I mean, it just takes time. Um, number two, we are talking about people's, uh, property. In South Carolina, um, they have every protection about, under the law. Even in the process that we have at the city level, um, we can say, we're gonna, we're gonna take this house down, but they even have a right to file suit in circuit court. Right, so I mean, it's, it's not like, um, it, it's gonna happen overnight, it will certainly take time. And I think the city wants to do, of course, everything it can to make sure they're talking to the right person who can give consent, um, to take it down. And even when there's personal property, to the chief's point, there's a whole other process to remove the personal property.
I, I believe in the next thirty days, you cannot get answers out of these forty people. You need to start the process. I mean, am I right or wrong?
I, I don't think we hurt-
If we can't get an answer from these forty people within the next thirty days, we don't need to wait any longer, we need to go ahead and start the process.
And, um, I, I certainly understand that. Part of the issue, though, is we still don't know who the owner is.
Title abstract.
That just takes time. Well, that's again, we, we haven't even hired a title abstracter yet, I mean, so we just don't know yet.
All right, so, um, and so base-
One more question, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
And I just thought, I'm sorry, do, do we have a timeline on actually to, um, use this grant? Are we gonna lose this grant?
No ma'am.
So it's, so it's there?
No ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, and we've already got the match set aside to go along with the federal funds, and so we've met our obligation for the match. Y'all approved that when we took the money from the, um, account out of Columbia.
When was that done?
Uh, I wanna say about sixty days ago. And it's sitting in an account drawing interest, so we, we're not losing any money. We just moved it from Columbia to our local facility here. So if we can't move forward on some of these, we don't have to wait and move the money over. We have it in mind. Anything else on that one? All right, so, just to give a rundown on where we are, we had the meeting at the, the senior center. One of the items that was mentioned on that was a, a family, um, field trip. Uh, I'm working with Dr. Hickson, by Friday, there'll be a list of families uh, that will be taking this field trip to the zoo in Columbia, and we'll be using a local gentleman, Roosevelt Bryant's office, uh, bus, to be taking them to Columbia. So we are working and facilitating that as well. And also, the part of the esports equipment has arrived, we're waiting for the last few CPU units, and then we'll be able to start moving forward in that. So, and so all the things that we've had going on, uh, for the past few months, that's kind of a rundown on where we, we stand at. So right now, I'm gonna give you your financial report for the month of, through the month of April. Uh, the general fund, we have brought in revenues of six million, four hundred and seven thousand dollars, that's eighty-five percent of our budget. Uh, with us being in the fourth month, we should be right at eighty-four percent. Um, on the expenditures, we have spent six million, nine, eighty-nine, that's ninety-two percent of our budget. Um, and so we have a cer- we have overspent our revenues by five hundred and eighty-two thousand. But we still have the taxes that are gonna be coming in, that we always backdate into a journal entry and set those up as receivables. And the water department, we have revenues of one million, four twenty, that's ninety percent of our budget. We have expenses of one million, two sixty-seven, that's eighty percent of our budget. We have a surplus of a hundred fifty-three thousand, forty-two dollars in the water department. In the sewer, we have, uh, two million, five forty-five, that's eighty-seven percent of the budget. We have expenses of two million, six hundred sixty-six thousand, that's ninety-two percent of the budget. We have overspent our revenues at this point by a hundred twenty-one thousand dollars. So that's the financial, uh, report through the month of April. Uh, Mayor Council, I have for your consideration, the bills, uh, for the pretended for the month, day, May eleventh, numbers one through eight, for your consideration and, uh, approval. I think we need a motion to approve the finance items one through eight.
I may, make a, um, motion to approve bills, items one through eight to be approved.
Second.
Property moved in second. Questions or discussion?
What does Eric do to us?
That's, that's our, uh, IT company. That's our IT company. And you're in the question. None, all those in favor, by show hand? Uh, Mayor Council, I, uh, turn it over to Chief Joseph Cooper for his monthly report. Chief Cooper.
Good evening, Mayor Council. This is Lake City. Uh, for April, we have so many calls for service to the police department that we responded to, um, and received one thousand and nine. Traffic stops conducted, one hundred and ninety-seven traffic stops were conducted within that month. We responded to approximately sixty-three, you know, burglary alarm calls. We had two hundred and fourteen, uh, reported, uh, property checks done within the city limits. Thirty-five accidents were recorded and investigated. Thirty-two warrants were served. We had ten assaults that happened within the city in that month. We also had a report, uh, a report of fourteen total shootings. We're, we're not talking about shooting incidents, where someone was hurt. I'm a fourteen total that were called in saying they heard gunshots. Out of those fourteen, there's only one that was confirmed, and that happened at a local, um, bar, um, an unauthorized local bar here in Lake City on Sandy Street. We had eleven burglaries and a sense of break-ins, either to a shed or to a, a vehicle that was parked, and the doors were left unlocked, and the bagpipe was out and open. The month of May, we also had eleven total driving suspensions that were ticketed. So the total count, the incidents, one hundred and sixty-one. Twenty-four resulted in arrests when they responded on the scene. And that is gonna be the status for the incidents that's recorded for the month of May, sorry, April.
Questions?
I just have a concern with, um, I, my daughter plays softball, and, you know, I go to softball and baseball games a lot. And at the field, sometimes we have people that gets angry, and they express their anger, either through driving through their fast, um, or getting, um, in altercation with people. And I want to know if there is any way that we can have some type of law enforcement or security on site on our ga- at our games? Um, due to the safety for our children, sometimes there is grandparents there, so to the elderly too, that comes to watch their grandchildren play. Um, because sometimes it can get out of hand, and they're saying, "You know, something is happening, but we don't have anyone on site." And sometimes when you do have law enforcement on site, it kinda, you know, brings somebody level down. But if, but if they don't see anyone, you know, it's like, "Okay, I'm doing anything I wanna do. I come through there racing, no matter how many children are running." Um, so that's just a concern of mine.
Right, and, and I, and I share those concerns, um, usually when we have, um, sports that'll be played, especially on Land Street within the city. Um, the, uh, police officers, because of the shortage of officers that we have, they respond in between calls, and they go by there as much as they can while they're out on, on patrol itself. If there's something that's going on, of course, we usually get calls saying that there's something that's actually happening. Um, depends on where the incident, where the, uh, activities are taking place, like you mentioned, the, uh, stadium in that area. If it's, if it's something that's being conducted, or at least, uh, it's being led by the high school, okay, that's gonna be a county issue, that's gonna be, it's gonna be sheriff's office.
Well, I'm, I'm, I do have one that played for the high school, but I'm talking about the little ones, recreation.
Right.
That's, that's, that's what I'm talking about.
And we try our best to get over there, we, we're just, we're just short. I mean, I have no excuse for it, I'm not gonna make a excuse for it. We're just short often, we try every day we can to get officers to come out there. But to have a, a ratio of officer- Sorry? To have a ratio of officer at every game, um, it's just something we have to work on. We're not utilizing our investigators to kind of split the shift between units in that night, so they can come out and try to help out as far as overlapping shift. Try to make sure that we have the proper coverage. Even in, in the event that something happens on the bottom end, it was lower end, as they call it, and we don't have the support, or at least enough, uh, individuals to come out as far as law enforcement, without partnering agency, with sheriff's office, we help each other out. If they can't respond because they're tied up in another part of Johnsonville, on the lower end down by Kingsburg, we go to their call, storming the county. You know, so it's just something we have to keep working on to get it right. And citizens pretty much understand this, but the criminals know this, if that makes any sense.
Yeah.
And they know, they know we're short. I mean, it's on the news every day that law enforcement is short. And especially now, with things are going forward with the type of crimes that are committed, and also with the, um, I guess, the quick turnaround as far as, you know, being, uh, city bond, for instance, it happened by the wrong bond. There's really no incentive to do the right thing and stay out of trouble. I mean, I, I don't put it on anyone except for, we just have a system that's gonna take some work, gonna take some time. And I'm glad no one's actually got hurt with some of these incidents, or some of these games, or some of these activities that are being done, but we're trying our best to make sure that we cover as much as we can. And in the event that we're out here, uh, just like with, um, Arts Field, which is very successful, we didn't have any incidents that happened then, but during that time, we did have a fire that occurred, so my police officer had to be utilized as a resource for the fire department to help block the roads and stuff like that. So when they see these incidents happen, criminals not gonna say, "Well, the police is tied up, we're not gonna do anything till they're done". No, it doesn't work that way. So we try our best. You know, my thing is, like I tell, uh, parents that are out there, and I tell the officers that are going out there, "When you're between calls, go out there and make your presence known. If something's going on, I encourage the parents and people, just call. Call nine-one-one and let us know. Because calling me is not the answer, because I cannot respond to six thousand calls per people in this community. Call nine-one-one, and that's what it's there for. Put it on the CAD so they can prioritize the thing. Because if we can't get there as a police department in Lake City, the sheriff's office will respond. Sheriff's officers can't get there, the closer they get, they'll call fire control. We have a protocol which we use. And I know it's easy sometimes to pick up the phone and just call Chief Joey. Chief Joey can't do that. You got, just call nine-one-one, no matter how many times you call, we're coming. You know, it may take us a little while, we're tied up, but we, we're just in a, a timeline now.
I know, McGregor's Circle at the end, where it leads to the airport. Uh, I hear my sister talk with so many incident, how the young boys, they come with their guns in their hand, and they go to the end of that road up in there, and they shoot, have a shootout, they be shooting. And then she says, she be on the float, try to get out, all, all that kind of stuff. And then right behind them is the county. So they, they drop the ditch and run back there, but then she, they walk through boldly with guns in their hand. She said, "Don't be no toy gun, these are, these are men. Uh, uh, some of them are children, and then some of them are actually adults, uh, that, you know, shouldn't be doing this, but they, what are we to do? You know, people say the elective fishing, I do their job, I'm not gonna stab me in front of a bullet. The bullet ain't got no name on it. You know, uh, uh, I'm concerned, uh, you know, if, uh, some type of lighting or some type of, uh, 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 camera or something in that area, since it's so known for high crime, and this is what they're doing, they're having a field day shooting out back there in that, in that area, and, and just, you know, what can we do?
Well, right back, and like I say again, it's, it's very unfortunate, but the way the municipality is set up as far as the, the lines that would you cross between the city and the county, the city limits, the corporate city limits and the county, we have the part of the roadway that you can actually go down to the Rainy Lassie, and those back areas back there by the airport. However, that jurisdiction is controlled by the county, we have no jurisdiction there. So what they call it, and these guys know this, so if they go back there and they shoot, they wait for somebody to call nine-one-one, dispatch, what they normally would do is take the call and say there gunfire, being heard in the area of Rainy Lassie in the county area. What they'll do is they'll see if a deputy is available. If the deputy's not available, they call us. And what we do, we go there and try to see where it's going, where it's at, or where it's coming from. But it's a process, you gotta think, there's tired room in between. So someone with a gun will walk away. Now, and, and what I don't like about that process is not so much the logistical process of these guns and stuff like that and the shooting, it's the fact that we have citizens that know where these people are, and they walk in the house.
They won't tell you?
They won't tell us.
Come on.
They won't tell us. And then when we get there, we ask it, "Okay, the guy just had a gun, the guy just walked in this area, he walked into your home, oh, no, it's not true." You know, and what they don't understand, they like to use metaphor, this phrase of snitch, you know, but it's, it's not, it's, it's, it's what some of people were saying earlier. We, we gotta do it as a people. That's, I, I think I heard that earlier. So if you know your family member, you know your friends out here doing something that's criminal, and they just call nine-one-one, you don't have, if you have a distrust for the police department, if you have- Yes, ma'am. If you have a distrust for the police department, or any law enforcement entity, if you have disdain for Lake City Police Department, if we haven't proven ourselves to be worthy to be protecting your city, call Crime Stop. You don't have to leave your name. Just call and say you heard this, just call and say so-and-so's got some- We will act, I'm telling you, we, we will respond to it, we will work on it. But if you don't tell us, we won't know. We do not have anything that's in the future that we can see things before they happen, you know? But if you know that hypothetically Craig is out here shooting, he just walked into this Cora's house, and you saw him, and you see us pull up, and you did nothing, is it really our fault? Is it the police's fault?
No, no.
Uh, but we talked about that earlier, about the citizens helping out.
Thank you.
We're gonna do our part, we're gonna do our part. If you could help us out, and just tell us, point us in the right direction, we're gonna do what the law dictates. You know, but I'm not gonna have officers in a situation to respond in an area that's gonna be dangerous. That is our job, correct, that is our job. But common sense plays a part in this. If there's gunshots, and there's only one officer available, that officer knows- If there's gunshots and there's only one officer available, that officer knows he is not going down there. He is not going, he's going to wait, he's going to stage, he's going to wait for some more officers in them deck and show, and they're going to go down in a group. That's how we do it. Some of you may say what you want, but that's how we do it. Okay, and a lot of, uh, law enforcement agencies have, have actually, uh, done this process and, and it works. It works. But again, I get what you're saying and it's, it is bad, but we, we're going to have to work with it and work with these other agencies. Like I said, there's a shortage everywhere and we have cer- certain portions of the road that we can actually patrol and we can go into these areas that are city. And some is telling me we don't have jurisdiction, you know, um, but we try. We really try.
Thank you.
But when, but when you try and you send them to Florence.
Yes, sir.
They back out in an hour.
Yes, sir.
And then they get something else.
Yes, sir.
And that's, that's something that... I, I know we got to get to the legislatures, I know that.
We've been dealing with that also and I had calls from concerned parents.
Do what?
Keep putting the same people back in office, Matty shut up.
We, we've had, uh, calls from citizens and, um, parents and, and especially victims that when we arrest someone and we actually do our due diligence and processing, collecting evidence, finding proper cause to make the arrest, we go to the judge and we get an affidavit. We actually show cause to make the arrest of a person. We've actually taken a bond hearing and we talking about individual, once we pulled their rap sheet in the criminal history, they're already out of bond for attempted murder, some are out of murder. You know, then when we get there, we take them down to the county and then it was not so much the county or any court, just about, you know, our jurisdiction is Florence County. When they're there, the bond is so substantial that in some cases that it's, it's kind of hard to explain. It really is. Because it's just frustrating for us to do our job, it's, it's really frustrating for the victims that we're, as the victim so heavily said, um, I was in court, the person that assaulted me was in court. They got a PR bond, it was a personal reconnaissance bond, and they beat me back to Lake City. What can you do? Now, and that victim in that case is actually moved because that person is still doing what they want to do and, and, you know, pretty much just antagonizing and, and just, it, it's bad.
It's going to happen, somebody's going to be killed. I mean, it's going to happen, who wouldn't know?
Right. So it's, it's kind of hard to defend it when you already out of bond for murder, attempted murder, you take them down and they're still coming back home and they're still out. And, um, and then the bonds are pretty much so low, I mean, you can just reach in your pants pocket and give them money, just get them out. I mean, I know every, this process requires us to have a checks and balances as far as when a person is arrested. They have a, they have a right to due process. You know, but it's got to be fair across the board because you have to, you have, you have to look at the victim. You have to look at the whole thing. And it, it is frustrating, but we, as long as you call, we're going to keep coming, we're going to keep arresting. Hopefully we get there before someone loses their life. But, um, as a community, that's what we're.
Look at the inequities in the justice system.
Yes, ma'am. But we try and we, and everything we get, we try and we don't overinflate, we don't stack charges on people, we give you what you earn. You know, but unfortunately nowadays, especially in some court systems, some individuals, they, they become an advocate for certain individuals, but they're doing it in the, in the wrong way. Because there's a timing and a place for every day. You can be advocate for a lot of things, but you got to have your season to justify the reason. So, but that's where we are now. We're going to keep, I mean, my officers not going to leave us, so we're still going to keep fighting because they love it. And they love it here in Lake City, so they're going to keep doing their job.
Thank you, Chief.
Uh, Chief, we have what, four of them getting, four of them in are either headed to the, uh, to school, correct?
Yes, sir, we have one in the academy now and we have three more waiting to go.
And those are not allowed to be out in the community until they go through their training.
Exactly, they're just candidates now, they haven't been, um, certified by the state of South Carolina to go out here and actually do their job, but they're eager to go. And like I said, we may be short on manpower, but I'm not going to put an officer out there in the street that's not, that's not ready, just not trained, because you create a liability, I mean, it just, it just plays stupid. So no matter how strong we are, we may do what we have, we have officers that work a lot of hours, they burn a lot of hours and stuff, but they understand why. Because to put somebody out there that's green, that's untrained and give them a handgun just because you can, you, you create a situation, because I do not want to go to that parent's house and knock on the door and tell them, your child was killed.
So what are they doing about sensitivity towards, um, different cultures? Because that's been a, a real problem in this country.
Yes, ma'am. Um, we have sensitivity training that's supported to us through the academy and also there's advanced training in a way of sensitivities, sensitivity training. What I liked about our department, that I can honestly say, I can't speak for the sheriff's and chiefs, that we have a very diverse police department. Caucasian to African-American, we have Hispanics, we have diversity, we have diversity everywhere. We, I mean, it's, we, we love it, it's, it's a melting pot. So we don't seek color, you know. And I can't sit back and, and account for everything that comes out of officers' mouth. I really can't. I look at body cam and I go from there. But we, but the way we handle things is we approach it based on what type of energy we get when we get there. We actually come to be quiet, we do this, we tell you in a way, and we got this thing we call ATM. I'm not talking about the old mini television now. We got the ATM, we ask you.
But I mean, seeing color is all.
But we ask you, then we tell you. And by, by color of the law, we make you. So that's the, so it's a process before we do anything.
Diversity is, is great. Seeing color, there's nothing wrong with seeing color, it's just seeing people.
Right, oh yes, I get, I get.
That's, that's what matters.
Right.
At all of people, regardless of the color.
I agree, I agree. And we make sure that when, when, uh, when we approach these individuals and we charge them and we try to, try intervention, try to redirect it, younger, especially the younger generation, it's done on that level. But at the same time, we have to understand that based on the mandates by, um, South Carolina law, if there's a victim, there's no negotiating. I don't care who you are, I don't care how much you know Mr. Jody, that's my officer. If there's a victim that's pressing charges, you got to go. There's no negotiating. So we take that same care and that same approach, everybody who's a victim in the city, especially a child. You may know him, you may not like it, you may think it's ugly. I know that child, they won't do it, I know his family, you may know their family, but I know a victim. And that's the way we approach it. So it's, it's, it's an ugly job, you know.
What you say with sensitivity, right, uh, I don't think you really understand what she was saying. Uh, sensitivity is the way you approach someone and, and turn your voice and what you're saying to that first at that time. Uh, that means a lot, your approach, um, stands for everything. You approach a person as an officer, your approach means a lot when you approach me. Let's say you come and you arrest me. When you approach me, it's the way you approach me that might, I might be fair for my life, it's the way you approach me.
Right. Right.
That means everything.
Right. And I understood what she said about sensitivity.
Well, it means a lot.
Yeah, what I was.
For some officer, they don't know how to approach, um, some of the, um, people and they're arresting them.
Right.
Somebody that looks different sometimes.
Yeah, someone that's different from them. Like she said, you don't know how to approach them, because I'm African-American and you might be Caucasian, you don't know how to approach me.
Right.
It's a push that means everything.
It does, it does.
And that's upset the person, attitude and everything.
Right, and that's why I said, um, when I made that statement and you got an analogy, we, we do, um, understand the sensitivity and I did understand the question, that's why I say ATM. We ask you, then we tell you, then we make you. See, that's, that's, that's the part we, you don't, that's the part you're not connecting with. I mean, if you, if you're arrested, if you're coming, if you are an individual that has to be arrested, you got to know the whole story of the person we approached. You can't take your camera as soon as we show up. No, you need to know before we go out there with this person, D. An example of a person being a, a criminal that actually committed murder, there's no way I'm going to go there and stand there and ask this man if he's going to go to jail with me. That ain't going to happen. And if you deem the police to be a type person that, oh, they should be sensitive about that, you are wrong, it will never happen. If you that person, you know the backstory of who we going after, it's going to be an ATM type deal. If you got somebody that's checked for, somebody that's a little bit different identity than, there is a way to approach it. But we do not take a person's gender or their color to be something that's easy to approach because we have a lot of law enforcement officers that are dead now because they underestimated someone. That's why we all train the same. If you're going to fuss about how we do things here, you have to talk to your legislative body because we all do the same thing. Now, some of them may not like in Lake City, some of them may not like in Florence County, but you go to Charleston, you get the same thing. But it's, but we shouldn't do it here because we know the police. Don't do the crime, you can see the police. Because we're going to do our job and my job is to make sure these officers go home safe. But I'm going to treat you with dignity and respect, but you want to respect my officers too.
And we want to make sure also, also we are making sure that we are not shooting too fast also.
Exactly.
You know.
Yes.
Or if the trigger happens.
Yes, ma'am. And by the grace of God, we haven't had one yet, unless y'all know one. Ask, tell, make.
That's all.
That's it.
Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
One of the things happening in society, there's no consequences for your actions.
If you're not, can you speak louder?
I said, there's no consequences for their actions.
There are always consequences.
Uh, undoubtedly there's not because they had to slow them down. It had to slow them down, it's just out there, but I, I just don't think, um, I just don't think there's enough.
There's so much misunderstanding that when I got up, I said, we need a village. I called you, I left your voice message.
Yes, ma'am.
All y'all doing is talking now.
I know.
I said, elected officials, that includes state, county, whatever we got, concerned parents, see all these people that are concerned, right? Police, ceasefire zones, I know you've heard of that, these are other things, right? That people are doing, okay? We've got to come up with a system, because we all care about the same thing. We all care about the same thing. If you look up, ninety percent of your people that go to jail, you know they got mental illness? So we got to factor that in too. These people have mental illness and everything, but you can't come and say, that's Matty Thomas' grandson, so we're going to treat him a little bit different. I'm going to go up here and drop the charges, have mercy, so that's Matty Thomas' son. And two weeks later, Matty Thomas' son kills somebody. What have you done? And Jody knows this is happening. That's why when somebody come to talk about Jody, I say, wait a minute, hold up, hold up. Because that's what happened, not only the bond, they go, look, Matty, just, Matty's son, could you drop the charges again, son? I am not telling you the truth, okay? This is what I'm talking about, we can sit here and talk all night. Why don't we phone this committee, I'll be in your office tomorrow. We can get this done though. We got to care about these young kids, and I mean every kid. Matty Thomas, Mika, Mayor Anderson, Pastor Hooker, and that little boy in the ghetto that you don't know, that go to bed hungry at night. Uh, somebody's molesting that child. We don't know nothing about it. Y'all don't know the hell some of these kids live in. I do. You don't know the hell they live in. You don't. So don't be so judgmental, because I have did work out there. And what some of these kids go through would make you cringe.
How dare you?
Some of these kids would make you cringe, with what the things they go through. So it's a big picture, everything that you put in.
Matty, let me say one thing. Because there's consequences for everything. Sometimes we want consequences for one side of town that we don't want for the other side. And we've got to realize that Lake City is a unit. And whatever happens on one side, you might think you're missing it, but it's coming to your side because we've got to work together. And I'm so tired of people being so, so.
What you said there.
One-minded, so having such a small view, I only see myself. We act like we're bipolar. We're not bipolar people. We should realize that anything that happens on one side of town affects the whole unit. Because when businesses and, and schools and the industry is looking at Lake City, they don't just look at your side of town, they look at my side too. And if you don't care about my side, then they'll say, there's no sense in coming here because we can't find a, a city that's, that's unified, that's looking for the benefit of all people. And we've got to start looking at all people. I would agree with you.
All right, thank you.
But I said, we should come together, get this done.
Uh, Mayor and Council, that. Uh, Mayor and Council, that is Chief Cooper's report. Uh, next step, we'll be going into executive session, it's your pleasure, Mayor.
Okay, we need a motion to go into executive session pursuant to the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act, section thirty dash four dash seventy, eighty-one, for the discussion of personnel employment, compensation for appointments and the receipt of legal advice relating to pending, threatened or potential claims and matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, as well as a settlement of legal claims and other matters related thereto.
I make a motion to move into executive session as read.
Second.
Properly moved to second. All those in favor, buy your hands.
Councilor Crossley.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
For benefit of all those, there were no decisions made in executive session to be tabled until our next meeting.
Make a motion, make a motion to, motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
All in favor? Councilmember.
Yes.
So, Mayor and Council, we have on the table Resolution Number 20, 22.031. Final reading for your consideration.
Make a motion to table.
Second, third.
The property moved in second. All those in favor, I show hands. Okay, closing remarks. Richard was starting here.
Okay, couple of things I want to say. When we had the truck, restaurant type thing, that thing uptown there, I thought that the city did a great job of keeping everything clean and taking care, everything was really organized up there. Same thing at Art Fields. I thought, a lot of times when you have stuff like that, you see trash in and everywhere, and I thought, I thought they did a good job of keeping everything clean and straight, and had streets blocked off like they should and stuff like that. Tearing down the houses, I'm kind of, I'm really confused on that one, but I'll be okay. When are they gonna start paving Main Street? Is that not, that's in the process, right?
They did part of it already.
I'm talking about.
The other end?
Fifty-two Main Street, up here by the railroad and all like that, because there's a lot of places to be dug out and stuff.
Yeah, you got one there, and you got one, where's the street that the little park is on, when you cross, where they tow, tow down Carter Mill, we hit that crossing there.
There you.
There you. That one's cracking up as well, and you go down to school, Head Start, it's cracking up. Even the one down that goes back to.
Church Street must be gonna be repaved too, right?
It should.
Because it's, I mean, they got everything marked to dig it out and fix it, so I just, okay. Can we find out?
Yes, sir.
And also, while you mentioned that with the lighting, with, with, with the lighting, I did talk to Mindy the other day, but she's gonna get those numbers for me. Because we're doing the whole thing overall, right? I mean, they're doing the whole grid and, and, you know, tightening up the loose ends right now, and then they're gonna just come and come back and do a clean sweep and get everything. So we didn't forget about, we didn't forget about.
That's good.
Okay, Richard here.
I'm through.
That's it. Well, thank everyone for coming out, sharing all your concerns, like you always do, do appreciate it, and just to please encourage others to do the same. I applaud our community, I applaud our council members, I applaud our city staff, our police, everyone, because we all want the same thing. We want to see safety in our streets. We want to see us, our streets clean. We want to see our neighborhoods beautified and pretty. This is our town, this is our city, and we all want the same thing. There might be some that can do a little bit more than others, but if we all put ourselves together and work together, we can get it done. And I feel like we can, and we can move forward by doing that. But we do have to bring it, acknowledge, make it, you know, make it known, because everybody's not everywhere. It could be something I see on this side that I don't see on the other side. But as long as we can come together and work together, we can get it done. So I do appreciate everybody bringing their concerns. I, I, I feel you. I mean, I haven't, not saying that anyone that's up here don't know, because we do know. We live in the neighborhoods as well. I haven't been up here that long. I do know. I do know. I'm a mother, so I don't want a bullet coming hitting my child. I don't want a bullet coming through my house hitting me, or my grandbaby, or my mother, as she walking out the house just to go to Walmart. So I, I know the concern, and I want to do everything and anything that we can do to crack down on this. But we must not point the finger. We must not point the finger. We need to work together, collaborate, collaborate and make it happen. Kudos to the Art Fields Group and the City of Lake City staff for a great ten-year art field celebration. I think it, it went off wonderfully. Y'all didn't see me, but I did dance during art fields. But, um, but it went very well. It went very well. Kudos to Art Fields. And just let's all continue to be safe, especially Memorial Day holiday is coming up, that's right around the corner, and thank everyone for coming.
I actually have to agree with everything that Councilmember Robinson just said. But once again, just thank you all for coming out and addressing your concerns.
I also echo to what was said already about everything going on in Lake City. And I was saying, you know, we as elected official, we working for the city. We all was elected, someone was appointed, whatever I can do to make this city a great city, I'm still standing. I still stand for the right thing. Wrong was not built overnight in Lake City until we get together. We could talk about one side of town is bad, the other side of town. I live in the bad side of town too. So I want my streets paved. I want my house brown, looking good too. But then, I got my neighbor down there throwing all the trash. The property next door is owned by a landlord, he don't never cut it. But I want him to cut it, but then, what can, what can we do? I can't go out there, I'm gonna knock him down. I'm gonna make him do it. I can't make nobody do nothing. But until we work together and understand, because we are elected, that don't make us nothing but one vote to try to make a difference in this city. And that's all I'm all about. I cannot change Lake City, but I try to change the mindset of my people to let them know we want the city to be a great city. We want people to be proud of coming to Lake City. In Art Field, you thought we was in a big wealthed city, because people don't want to coin. That's all we all about, being together, united together. So it ain't about throwing the brick and making someone else feel bad. God love my city, and I'm gonna do the best, whether I'm elected, appointed, or just came here, or whatever. And the mayor had approximated for my family, for the family recording that we did. And I was born and raised in K E South Carnady, in the suburb, you know, and I call it the suburb, that's where I live. But, and I'm proud, the forty-five years now I've been in Lake City, I'm proud to be in Lake City. I have three children that graduate from high school here, and all of them, I can say they're successful, they're not in jail. So they all have job and take care of themselves. That's why we all about building this community, making better citizen, making our children, grandchildren, and whatever. I mean, I see a child walk up by my house, they want something, they know I'm a feed them, you know. I, I, you can't, man can't stay a night, but if you were out of home, that kind of thing. But you know, let's begin to love one another and not make one feel bad because you ain't did nothing. Because I would like to see, when you get elected, see what you're all gonna do. And I thank you. I thank you for my vote. I thank you for my vote, because I'm gonna serve. I have to serve the people. Thank you.
Okay, but thank you.
We just want to say thank you for everybody that came out tonight, and certainly works. I, I think in all families, you go through some difficult times. There gonna be times that you don't agree with each other. But if you family, you gonna get beyond it. You gonna learn how to be successful. And being successful sometimes mean you don't get everything that you want. It means that everybody else has to get a little piece of it. And this is a strong town. If you were to look around and see some of the history of some of the other towns and cities in this region, Lake City has a strong history. There's a lot of things that happened in Lake City that are, as we say, historical. And when I say historical, I mean they're in books, they're in magazines, they're on tapes and videos. So we, we've got a legacy that came through Lake City, and we have to continue to strengthen it, strengthen where and how our people live, infrastructure needs we gotta have. And I agree with, with all of you guys, we gotta get out and get the people to understand what infrastructure is, how that works. It might be five or ten years before we get those rules, but you doing them for the next generation that's coming along behind us, and it ma, it makes a big difference. So thank you all for taking your time out of your schedules.
Please, please.
Let me, let me make sure, let me make sure I got everybody. I think I made this one.
Oh, God.
I did.
Okay, thank you all for coming out and doing your concerns. Together we can. Together we can. But the law has let you come, a little sleepy town, where you didn't back in the day, sleeping with the doors unlocked. You know, I mean, just go back to basics, little time to change. Look at your past. Together we can.
Thank you.
Make a motion we adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you all.